To this long awaited meeting of the Wayne Westland Board of Education. Welcome, we're so happy to see you here tonight. I'm very happy to say that we have the pledge allegiance to begin our meeting this evening, and we have four students from Taft Elementary School. They are Emily Delane, Madeline Donahue, Kingston Lawrence, and Joshua Roy. If you would please come to the front of the room and we'll all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Oh yeah.
Whenever you're ready. I pledge allegiance.
You start?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now just a moment, I'm going to come down there. Folks, we're going to see a video.
We believe.
We believe.
We believe.
We believe.
Gentlemen, will you allow me to introduce the ladies first? Thank you so much. Madeline? Madeline Donahue. The secretary has a bio for Madeline.
I do, and when I get done reading all these bios, we'll all come to the conclusion that Taft Elementary is the world's greatest elementary school. My name is Emily, from the world's greatest elementary school, home of the Taft Tigers. This year, I'm in the 4th grade, and Mrs. Rhea is my teacher. Rhea, thank you, dear. That was my first thought. My favorite thing about being a Taft Tiger is being an office assistant. I love to play soccer, and I am the goalkeeper. That's a tough position. I would like to thank the board office for keeping our school district together, all of my friends, my family, and Mr. Cox.
Emily? Emily, this award is in recognition of your leading the flag ceremony during the Board of Education meetings. Thank you very much. And now, Madeline.
Ready? Good evening to the Board of Education and the audience. My name is Maddie, from the world's greatest elementary school, home of the Taft Tigers. This year, I'm in the 4th grade, and Mrs. Rhea, right? Is my teacher. My favorite thing about being a Taft Tiger is coming to school to see my friends. I also love coming to school to see the smiles on everyone's face. I would like everyone to know that I love sports and love running. This year, I'm on Taft Girls on the Run team. I would like to thank my friends and my family for always being here for me.
Madeline, we had technical difficulties. This award of recognition presented to Madeline Donahue for participating in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of Wayne Westland Community Schools. And now for the gentleman.
Which one first?
Pick one.
Kingston. Who's Kingston? There you go. Kingston says, "Good evening to the Board of Education and the audience. My name is Kingston, from the world's greatest elementary school, home of the Taft Tigers. This year, I'm in the 4th grade, and Mrs. Rhea is my teacher. My favorite thing about being a Taft Tiger is coming to school to learn mathematics, because math is my favorite subject." Good for you. My favorite things to do are to play sports and video games. I would like to thank Mr. Cox, Ms. Sarah, Coach Humphries, Mrs. Rhea, and all of my classmates, and most importantly, my family.
Thank you, Kingston. This award presented to Kingston Lawrence for participation in the flag ceremony, Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools. Thank you, Kingston.
And Joshua says, "Good evening to the Board of Education and the audience. My name is Joshua, from the world's greatest elementary school, home of the Taft Tigers. This is, this year, I'm in the 4th grade, and Mrs. Rhea is my teacher. My favorite thing about being a Taft Tiger is coming to school and learning to do science and other activities. My favorite thing to do is play sports. My favorite foods are pizza and oranges. I would like to thank my family, friends, and teachers."
And Joshua Roy, participating in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools. Now, before we're finished, does anybody have anything that they'd like to say? Now, if you want to, clear it. Tell me, Joshua, have you brought anybody with you tonight?
They are where they are.
Do you want to do some people who aren't with you?
I brought my mom, my dad.
And did you bring any teachers or anybody else you'd like to mention? I wonder, what we'd like to do is we'd like to take a picture with the students who have led us in the pledge, coming up here to our seats, and we'd like their family to come up here and be in the picture. And Mr. Cox, we'd like you to come and be in the picture as well. Would you do that?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Come on down. There you go. Sit down. Oops. Show your certificates. Don't pass any logs.
Come over there.
Come on in. We got room for a bud.
Come on, somebody go rip us.
Get us all in.
I'm going to kill my audio.
Scooching, scooching, scooching.
Taft Tigers on three. One, two, three.
Taft Tigers!
Okay, hang on, everybody wasn't one hand. Everybody looking, you four sitting down, you really need to look at me and give me a big smile, okay? Ready? One, two, three.
Taft Tigers!
One more. One, two, three.
Taft Tigers!
Perfect, thank you. Right, yay! We did it!
Thank you again. There's not very many things more fun than that. We'll move on to agenda item 252.19, which is roll call attendance. Mr. Neal.
Uh, Mrs. Heinz.
Present.
Mr. Neal, present. Mr. Buckaloo.
Present.
Mrs. Meddell.
I'm here.
Mrs. Walker is absent. Dr. Weaver.
Present.
And Mr. Cox.
Present, and Mrs. Walker is excused this evening, and I believe that she's in a warmer climate. We look forward to seeing her at the next meeting. The next item on our agenda this evening is 253.19, recognitions and presentations. Dr. Holt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask the Westland Goodfellows' presentation to the John Glenn National Honor Society to please come forward. That should be Devon Arbor, John Florin, and Blake Grove.
On behalf of the Westland Goodfellows, Heather Hatfield, our president, Sherry. Ten years ago, our relationship with Wayne Westland Schools began to develop, and today we are so pleased with our continued partnership in serving the children of this community. For Christmas 2018, a total of 605 children received help from the Goodfellows, and 178 of those helped were selected to be adopted by local businesses and caring community members. Tonight, we are here to express our gratitude to the National Honor Society at John Glenn High School. Each year, they set a goal of collecting toys for the Goodfellows to hand out at Christmas, and to our knowledge, they surpass their goal every year. We have a certificate of acknowledgement to present to Devon Arbor, our contact with the Honor Society this year. We sincerely hope they succeed in all their endeavors, and they continue to support the children of our community. And I believe they collect over 300 new toys for the children of Westland. Thank you very much. Next, we are grateful for the continued support, the staff of Wayne Westland Schools, and the adoption of families for Christmas program. This season was a record number. I believe eight families were adopted, a total of 12 children. We have a certificate of appreciation for all the staff that contribute this year. We'd like the board to know that two of the families match up with district employees' families. It's always important to help those closest to you, and it's wonderful to see this program continue to grow. Thank you for allowing us to make this presentation tonight. Amanda Marla. Sunshine and Rainbow Preschool. Jennifer Curry.
Cheryl Watson.
Jennifer Curry. Cheryl Watson.
Cheryl Watson?
She's not with us right now, but I'll get it to her.
Jenny Johnson?
She's here.
Kim Marky?
We'll grab it for Kim. Kim's not with us tonight.
Sherry Grove?
I was going to say, your son's here.
Okay, Heather Martinez, Frayer, and Nicole Moore?
I don't know if Nicole or Heather are here, but we can grab them for OAE.
Beverly Edmonds?
That's OAE. That's Jennifer Curry's department, so here she comes.
The Westland Goodfellows are grateful to the officer of employee, community, and governmental relationships. Adopted family contributed 2018, no child without a Christmas program. As I said before, 605 Westland children received Christmas, and 178 children adopted by local businesses and citizens. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sir, let me just say thank you on behalf of the board to the Westland Goodfellows, and we know that you impact lives in a way that the people that you help never, ever forget it their entire life, so thank you for all you do.
I remember that all the time.
Thank you so much to the Westland Goodfellows. Now, I'd like to ask Mrs. Stephanie Niedermeyer to come up for a presentation from our forensics team, and this is a presentation that I personally asked for after just an amazing event, so I'll let you go ahead and speak on it and let our board know what we're so proud of at Wayne Memorial.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the school board. Thank you for letting me come speak today. Today is really not about myself, but it's about one of our biggest supporters at Wayne Memorial High School, Mr. Michael Frayer. Forensic science has been a program for over 15 years now. Mr. Frayer has been my partner in crime, we can say. He has been a huge help, a giant inspiration to our students. He is a retired chief of police for the Westland Police Department, so many of my activities, many of my real-life scenarios, all came from him. He has done so much in giving us not only benefits of the real world, but also financially. So, he has gone to his friends, he's gone to the community. Because of him, I have been able to buy supplies for a class, which is quite large in consumables. Through him, I have been able to acquire three mannequins that we use for our dead bodies. With his support, and not only to me, but to all of my students, they have seen such great success in this program. It's a program where students that may not really feel academics are hugely important, they find something that they like, and they can do things that they see in the real world. When they see it on TV, that's what we're doing in our class. We're flinging blood, we're collecting fingerprints. At the end of the year, very much I appreciate my school board, they, as well as many other community members, have come and listened to my students present. Every year at Christmas, Santa Claus has a problem where he isn't alive anymore, so they come, and the students come and solve the crime, and then they present to jury members. And jury members are members, not just teachers, but members of our community, so students can feel successful in a way where they're not just speaking in a classroom setting, but to two people. So, tonight, really, like I said, is not about myself, it's about Mr. Frayer. So, in honor of myself, Wayne Memorial students, Wayne Memorial High School, and all of the school board, we really appreciate all of your many, many, many years, over 15 years, of helping us build a program that students love, and I'm so happy and grateful to teach. So, thank you.
I just happen to have a few hundred chosen words here. A lot of Irish blood flows in my veins, give me a room full of people and a microphone, I could be here a long time. First of all, if anybody should be getting an award here, it's Stephanie Niedermeyer. Probably one of the most dedicated and professional teachers that's ever been my pleasure. Now, I'm not a tiger, but I am a zebra for life. And whatever success I may or may not have had in my life, I owe a lot to the fine education I received in Wayne, it was in the Wayne Community School District. So, I believe in paying back, and that's what I'm trying to do. But as long as I have your ear, one of the hard things for first responders, and I think the fire service as well as law enforcement is facing, is finding quality recruits. I've heard that you've got a pretty good vocational program here.
I agree, it's amazing.
Just saying, a little first responder training, why not?
Yes, we do.
Again, thank you very much, I'm honored to receive this, and hopefully I can hang around for another 15 years.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you again for that, Mrs. Niedermeyer and Mr. Frayer, and giving back to our community is so important, and we appreciate you for all that you've done, and I know we'll continue to do. Thank you. Our next presentation comes from two familiar faces, Mrs. Admanda Dibis and Mrs. Maria Mitter are going to present our Spelling Bee winners. And folks, this year was amazing when it came to the Spelling Bee, and so I'll turn it over to these fine ladies.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. Good evening, Board of Education members. I'm here tonight because I'd like to introduce for recognition this evening two students who are the winners of the district Spelling Bee, and also went on to represent Wayne Westland Community Schools. So Shannon O'Shea. Shannon is a 5th grade student from Adams Upper Elementary School, and Shannon won the Upper Elementary School District Spelling Bee. And then Jeffrey. Jeffrey Smith is a 7th grader from Franklin Middle School, and Jeffrey won the Middle School District Spelling Bee. Both of these students went on to represent Wayne Westland Community Schools at the WXYZ Channel 7 Scripps Regional Spelling Bee, which took place earlier this month at the Charles H. Wright Museum of African-American History in Detroit. We'd also like to thank the staff and family who helped prepare Shannon and Jeffrey with their studies, and I see several of them here this evening, I see both of their families, and also Erin Eaton, Angie Zaley, Kente Rosser, and Michelle Tackett here. Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to present the plaque. We have one for each student, this will hang in their schools, which will have their name on them, I've had them engraved. So for Shannon O'Shea, this is the plaque for Adams Upper Elementary School, so here's your name right here. And for Jeffrey Smith, this one will hang at Franklin Middle School. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Carol Meddell, who's going to present their certificates.
First of all, I need to apologize to the two of you, because I told you I was going to be there this year. It's usually on Saturdays. I work on Sunday morning. So unfortunately, I could not join you, but I was with you with spirit, I kept thinking, God, I hope they win, they win, they win. But you know what? You're both winners, just for the fact that you made it to the top of the kids in your own buildings. That's a lot, right there. And to represent our school district in a competition that was stiff, you guys did really, really well. So I want to congratulate both of you, and I do have certificates for you. For Shannon, I have a certificate from the school board recognizing your accomplishment in participating in the Earl Scherbagian Spelling Bee and representing our school district. And for you, Jeffrey, I also have a certificate for you. Again, representing our school district at the Charles H. Wright Museum, but also making it to the Earl Scherbagian Spelling Bee winner also. So congratulations to the two of you, and I'll expect to see you next year.
Excuse me, before you all leave, I wonder if the two winners and their families and all the people that supported them in this endeavor would please come up to the front here and get their picture taken so that we can, so that we can be in the picture and tell everyone we know them. Would you come on up, please?
Something that's never been said to me.
Hey, the first official picture.
How about if I stand here?
Absolutely. Come on, Mr. Buckaloo, let's photo bomb this.
Around the bay.
Someone may think we're important, huh?
Yes.
Probably shouldn't do revenue.
Okay, everybody look at me. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Okay, got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job to both Jeffrey and Shannon on their work. I know it takes a little bit of time, but as far as I'm concerned, we always have time for the babies, so we are going to make that time for the babies. Appreciate that. This next presentation is addressing one of the largest issues that was brought to the school district upon my arrival. I was asked basically to do something about discipline. Do something about discipline. And so, in response to that, the creation of a Climate, Culture, and Social-Emotional Learning Division has been a labor of love. It has also been full of a lot of great successes, but also, we still have room to grow. And so today, we're doing a progress check, just to talk about how we've done so far, and we have some areas of success, and we have some areas of challenge. So at this point, I welcome Assistant Superintendent Dr. Andre Townsall, and his team is going to present for our community their progress so far. Dr. Townsall?
Good evening, Wayne Westland.
Good evening.
Listen, it's an absolute privilege and pleasure to share the progress our district is making so far with regards to climate, culture, and social-emotional learning. I want to be clear, it's very hard, very difficult work, but once we get a handle on this, we can almost guarantee that the platform or canvas is set to increase academic achievement so far. So what I'm going to do is run through the work done thus far, and we're going to have some of our amazing principles to highlight some of the culture and climate work going on to their buildings to ensure academic excellence for all of our students. As you know, the mission of our department is to teach self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, so our students can... can maximize their academic potential and achieve all of their goals. One of the, at the end of the year report last year, there were five major areas that was highlighted in our district and one was glaring with student discipline, climate culture and the impact of trauma. I want to let you know where we were this time last year. This time last year, we set at over 2,000 out-of-school suspensions, 817 fights and 610 of those fights led to out-of-school suspensions. And the top three incidents this time last year was out-of-assigned area, disruption of school, fighting and assaults. Right now, so this time last year, that's what our data looked like. Today, we stand at less than 2,000 out-of-school suspensions, a 10% reduction, our fight and assault incidents reduced by 23% and our fight and assault suspensions reduced by 24%. And when fighting and assault was in our top three this time last year, it dropped to number six, not even in the top five. It's still disruption of school, out-of-assigned area and excessive tardies rose up. And that is a testament, so I'm sharing fights and assaults because you cannot hide that, you have to report everything with a fight and assault. So this time last year compared to now, there's a 24% reduction in that area. A plan of action, so when you hear restorative practices, PBIS, social emotional learning, it's a lot that goes into that, so I want you to know that at the top of the year, we continue to invest in restorative practices and the five core competencies of social emotional learning. And our principals hired, recruited and hired some climate and culture coaches to support the efforts in their buildings with regards to climate and culture. The climate and culture coaches to this date has received over 40 hours of training and support with regards to restorative practices and over 30 hours of training and support with regards to social emotional learning. Now, we're all doing this together, there are climate and culture coaches, there are school building administrators and there are teachers, everyone played a vital role, it's like a Crimson Court and it's a braid of collaboration where everyone's working together to ensure our young people are ready to learn in their school. So there's a role for the administrator with working with coaches, coaches have a role working with administrators and teachers and a teacher also have a role with learning from the coaches to increase the practices in their school. Restorative practices, you may continue, you're going to continue to hear this term over and over again, it went into law 2017, before you suspend, you must consider restorative practices prior to suspension. And the REACH search says that if you implement restorative practices effectively, you will see a decrease in suspensions, you will see a decrease in detentions and our data suggests that as well. So currently, restorative circles is the third most used alternative to suspension in our district. The top two are in-school suspension and warning and detentions are down 46% district-wide compared to this time last year. Social emotional learning, now remember, our vision and mission was to teach students self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making and relationship skills. And that suggests when you get out to the community, I know many of you may have seen our SEL videos, you see a lot of SEL tweets, different things on our social media, compared to this time last year, now let's be clear, things still happening, things are still happening, but it's happening at a less rate. Compared to this time last year, bus suspensions are down 41% district-wide compared to last year and restraints are down 29% district-wide compared to last year. There's curriculum that the collaborative and academic social emotional learning organization recommend and many of our schools are using some of these social emotional learning curriculums such as Positive Action, Second Step, Leader in Me and Michigan Model for Health. The goal in the upcoming year is to ensure that every school adopt an SEL curriculum to continue the work. In addition to the restorative practices, social emotional learning, we continue to invest in PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support. And to date, every last one of our schools have received a needs assessment through a tiered fidelity inventory to see how effectively are we providing tier-one or universal supports to all of our schools. We have that needs assessment, we have all of our schools broken up into cohorts whereas as they move through the next five years, they have an opportunity to build the capacity within tier-one, but have an effectively defined tier-two and tier-three supports for all students in their building. And a multi-tier system of support is one of the, is the state of Michigan's, one of their strategies to being a top 10 school district in the country in the next 10 years. And we're heavily involved in developing and implementing restorative practices. As a leadership council, we've been through a series of professional development videos, activities of building a multi-tiered system of support to answer the question, how do we respond when people struggle? Although you see the reduction on our data and that we are making progress, the game is not over, there's still more work to do. To date, we have, we've received last year, at the top of this year, approved for over $130,000 of 21H grant funding to continue to focus on SEL, to continue to focus on restorative practices and to invest in trauma-sensitive training. Our next training is coming up on April 13th, we have two sessions and a stipend is paid to all attendees through the 21H grant. So we definitely have more work to do as we move forward, but the progress so far is promising to ensure that we increase our academic achievement. Right now, I ask that some of our principals join us, one from each level, elementary school and upper elementary school, middle school and high school, so they can share with the community some highlights of climate and culture within their building to get some of the great results that we're seeing on our district. First, I'd like to bring up Ms. Principal, not Ms. Principal. Gee, I always call her Principal Hicks, but it's Principal G.
I like Ms. Principal. Perfect. Before I start, I would just like to shift your brains over here to the left and your minds and everything, your eyeballs. All of you with your shirts, come over here behind me, please. When Dr. Townsall sent me an email and asked if I would be willing to talk about Hicks, I said, "Yeah, of course," but I immediately forwarded his email to the staff because this is not just Amy G.'s data, this is Hicks' data. And all of the teachers wanted to be here today, but some just couldn't make it. Notice their shirts, that's our motto. So, which one do I push, the red one? Just kidding. Oh, okay. So, before I even start, three years ago, this is year three for me as the principal at Hicks, Hicks was in trouble, it was on the list to close. I remember my first month on the job, I had to sit in front of the superintendent and Skype with the state of Michigan telling me that, "Mrs. G., you have to do something, your building could possibly close due to what's been going on, the suspensions, the discipline." It was not a good place, most importantly academically, it was a failing school for years and years and years. So, sitting in that room, I knew right away, we had to put some action in place, but you can't put action in place unless your staff is on board. So, we had a very, what I call, courageous meeting with the staff at Hicks and put the data right in front of them. You can see in the blue, it was before my arrival, and the staff that is in place now in the green, moving forward, the decrease significantly has gone down in out-of-school suspensions. So you can't, just in full disclosure, the last, the current year, obviously the school year is not over, but we are right now trending to be under as well from last year's data. With that being said, it's very important to notice that teachers have to understand the data and understand the discipline of what we have to do moving forward. If they don't understand it, it's not going to work, but most importantly, you can hear is it like buy-in from the school. If there's not buy-in with the teachers, understanding of what we need to do with what Dr. Holt talked about and what Dr. Townsall just presented about with culture, climate and social emotional learning, mental health has to come first and if mental health is not done first, then our students can't learn. So, first and foremost, mental health of the teachers because they're the front line. So, teachers in crisis can't help students in crisis. So, we had to make sure that our teachers understood the why behind the shift of what we were doing and they did, hence the reason why they're standing behind me, they're so ridiculously dedicated. So you can see kindergarten discipline there, first grade here, second grade, third grade and fourth grade. And then, oops. Where's my last slide? No, all right. Okay, I can just talk about it. So real quick, two seconds, the, I will tell you that the dedication that we have with not just the teachers, we also have our culture and climate coaches, Dr. Townsall referenced, Hicks is very blessed to have a school-based therapist as well, we have a partnership with development centers that we got through Detroit Wayne Community Mental Health Authority down in Detroit. So our families are receiving therapy daily that need it for families that have had trauma. And then we also have Officer Cobble, who is hired now as our parent liaison. So Officer Cobble is an Inkster police officer right in our community and has relationships with tons of our families. So that was a very, very big deal. We ensure that with our families that we don't talk about that the police are the bad people, the police are the amazing people. And so Officer Cobble patrols the area for me and we have a family that is having truancy issues and absences, I send this guy out and say, "Hey, how can I help you?" Not, "You're in trouble," it's, "How can I help you, there's obviously a gap." We also offer laundry services to our families, kids were missing school due to not having clothing being washed, so we have employed two post-secondary special education students that help with laundry at Hicks and help our families. So Officer Cobble sometimes will go out and pick up the laundry and then we bring it back to the houses. So just a number of things, but briefly, this is Mr. Furka, fourth grade teacher, Tania Kitchen, our culture and climate coach, this is Rachel Hanzel, our speech therapist, as well as our PBIS leader, this is Kristin Duran, our instructional coach, Officer Cobble, known as Mr. Cobble at Hicks, Lindsay Duran, Lindsay Dugan, my goodness, Duran, Lindsay Dugan, kindergarten teacher, Christie Bruiser, kindergarten teacher, and Heather Smith, another instructional coach. So please give a round of applause to the people behind me as well as the staff that couldn't make it tonight, thank you so very much. Oh, and when discipline decreases, academic goes up and I'm very proud to say, I don't have enough time because he put a cap on it and I love to talk, but I could talk about us forever, I will tell you that Hicks academic data in every single grade, significantly over 70% of our students have shown growth on their NWEA district-wide testing. These people behind me, thank you.
Right now, we're going to bring up the team from Adams Upper Elementary School.
Good evening, everybody, good evening Board of Education, thank you for inviting us to come share about Adams. Okay, about January last year, I had a visitor come to me, it was the assistant principal at Stevenson and that visitor said, "Hey, we'd really care to go over to Adams and fill in as a sub-principal there." Being that I've been in middle school for most of my career, I was a little hesitant, but excited at the opportunity, so I jumped at it. By the end of the year, I was asked to stay on and remain as the principal at Adams and it has been quite the ride. What I noticed last year when I first got there was that there was, by the end of the year, 1,500 ODRs, office discipline referrals, and almost 800 suspensions. So I knew immediately, one of the things that I had to do was jump on this SEL, climate and culture train to try to fix the issues there before we could really address anything that had to do with academics. So I have a very long list of things that we have done, I'm going to share just some of the highlights. One of the things that we did right away is we created an SEL block at the end of the day, so from 2:10 to the end of the school day, every classroom is engaging in social emotional learning lessons using the Positive Actions curriculum that Dr. Townsall had spoke about. So every classroom, every day, students are engaging in social emotional learning. At the beginning of every day, there is a 20-minute block where students can engage in check-ins with their teachers and restorative circles in the classroom to help build those relationships and to build a community in the classroom, because we know that relationships are the number one priority in our schools to help our kids be successful. The second thing I did was I hired an SEL specialist, a certified teacher that works with students that are struggling, so our students that have the highest amount of ODRs, that are struggling, maybe in different areas in the classrooms, they get a double dip during the academic, I'm sorry, during the intervention block, so some of them are getting academics, some of them are getting SEL, so that they're getting a double dip on their SEL, it is not taking away from the current SEL time. She is using the Second Step curriculum. We do a social skill of the week at Adams and that does go out to parents and so there are steps and it breaks the skill down into very three or four easy steps to remind the students how to actually do the skill and everybody in the school is enforcing that skill. So it is not just in the classroom, but in the cafeteria, in the office, we're also supporting the social skill of the week. We're using alternatives to suspension including restorative circles and conferences, one that we had just come up today, we had some kids that did some messing up of a bathroom and Erin here had the kids go in and write an apology letter to the custodian and then they had to write questions and interview the custodian about his job and how their actions impacted, what impacted his job. Right here, right here. Over the summer, our staff received PD in restorative practices and Safe and Civil Schools Chance Classroom Management Training. We did a PBIS reboot training with the staff and we did our TFI, our Tiered Fidelity Inventory. I moved from two lunches to three lunches, you would not believe how much of a difference that made, having almost 400 children in each lunch last year, the end of the day was crazy because the kids were so amped up, so just that act of switching to three lunches made a huge difference. We received a grant for a transition coach, it is a certified, qualified mental health professional that has come into our school and is working in our school full-time, providing group counseling to our students and she just actually started last week, so we're really excited about that. And then finally, a creation of a parent and community involvement committee to really look for ways to involve our parents in the schools and really build that bridge between the school and the parents. And they did their very first event, Painting with a Parent, which was raved about, everybody was really thrilled and they had a great time. The other shift is our climate and culture, excuse me, our climate and culture coach, which Dr. Townsall spoke of, we had, thank you Erin, this is why I keep her around. You gotta flip it though.
I know.
To the right. Our climate and culture coach facilitates anger management groups, he does mediation and restorative practices, he mentors students, we do a request for assistance, so if a student is having difficulty in the classroom, the teacher can fill out a request for assistance and our climate and culture coach goes in and works with not just the student, but with the teacher. So that we're providing support on both sides for our students and for our teachers, manages a weekly check-in and check-out basketball reward for the students because Coach used to be a basketball player at U of M and the kids just adore him if they make their weekly goal and then it helps with the active supervision of the hallway before and after school and at lunch. The results, I'm going to have Erin Eaton share about the results we've seen.
So like Angie said, we know it hasn't been an easy road, this was a difficult shift for our staff to make, you know, lots of changes, but our staff has done a phenomenal job. So we've taken data from last year, September to March and compared it to this year, our ODRs, those are office discipline referrals, have decreased 42% from last time this year to comparing year to year, so we're down 42% there. Our suspensions have decreased 57% over the course of the year, so we're down 57%. Our fights have decreased 35%, so fights are down significantly. 6% of our population, the first half of the year, were students that were receiving three or more referrals, so if they received three or more office referrals, we put them into, we, you know, looked at their data, the second half of the year, when all of this was into place, that number had been cut in half, so 6% down to 3%. According to our NWEA, our projected proficiency, just like Principal G. said, you know, you see a decrease in the behaviors, the academics are going to go up. Right now, we are targeted, projected to beat, let me look at this correctly, I'm trying to read up here, make sure I get it right, we're projected to beat our fifth grade school improvement goal in reading by 6% currently and we are projected to meet our sixth grade school improvement goal in reading. So we're pretty proud of everything that our staff has done up to this point. We know we have a long way to go and lots more to do, but we're on the right track.
Next, I'd like to introduce Principal Rossar from Franklin Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kente Rossar, principal of Franklin Middle School, this is my first year there. Joining me is Dr. Jenkins, our assistant principal, this is her first year at Franklin as well. This is her first year at Franklin as well. One of the first things that we did when we arrived mid-August last school year is we took a look at last year's data. We saw that for the entire year last school year, that there were 1,304 suspensions. That's quite a few. So we were very intentional about setting goals for this school year, not just academic goals, but also behavioral goals as well. And one of our goals was to reduce suspensions by at least 40%. One of the ways we measured that reduction is on a month-by-month basis, looking at this year to last year. So what we've done, if you can see what we have here, is we look at these suspensions for last September. We saw that there were 81. This year, we only had 13. Last October, there were 162. This year, we have 74. Last November, there were 126. This year, we had 80. Last December, there were 72. This year, we had 73. So, listen, we give it our best shot. We, December is a rough month for a lot of people. And I'm learning that March is too. So we're doing a very good job. But we're very strategic, forgive me, I'm kind of losing my voice here. We're very strategic in how we place ourselves throughout the building. We make very good use of the personnel that we have. We have a Culture and Climate Coach, which every school in the district does this year. A very value-added position that is there to build relationships. We talk about Culture and Climate in a discipline presentation, but the Culture and Climate Coach doesn't deal with the discipline. He deals with building relationships as a preventative measure so that we don't have to deal with discipline across the board. He's very visible. He does a very good job building those relationships. But it's not just him. We have two social workers this school year, so we are better positioned personnel-wise to address the concerns that our students have. We also have two and a half full-time counselors as well, in addition to myself and Dr. Jenkins. And we also have a behavior interventionist. And we're all very visible during class change. We cover a lot of ground. We make our presence very known. And we've been very intentional with building relationships with staff and student, and we've had, ask our staff members to build relationships with the students as well. And as you can see, it's reflected in the discipline data, it's working. In addition to that, though, we've been rather innovative in our approach to discipline. Earlier in the school year, Dr. Jenkins was very strategic in how we identify students who were on track to exhibit Tier Two and Tier Three-type behaviors. Behaviors, not Tier Two and Tier Three students, Tier Two and Tier Three-type behaviors. For those students, we tried some different approaches, and one of those approaches was an introduction to mindfulness. And the introduction to mindfulness was through the practice of yoga. And it's worked very well for some of those students. And we have another round of yoga, which is coming up pretty soon. And that is an in-kind service that is provided to the district at no cost through our partnership with one of our community providers in Beaumont Hospital. So we've been very, very purposeful in what we've decided to do for our students and for our staff. We also had yoga for the staff as well. So we know that mindfulness is not just for the students, it's for the staff as well, and it's an overall holistic approach to addressing the concerns that we've seen and that we know we need. We also have the Transitional Coach as well. Ours has not began yet. That was a position that's awarded to us through a grant, so that's an in-kind service at no cost to the district as well. But above all, if I had to put my finger on what we can attribute this reduction to is the relationships that we've built, us being intentional, us making our presence felt. But it's not really about us, it's about the embrace of the staff, and most importantly, how it's trickled down to the students. I could be a little long-winded. I'm not sure if Doc has any words that she wants to say, but Doc is the muscle, right? She's the muscle. And the brains. I don't want to make it sound like it's, we work very well together. You know, the plans that she's put in place to address student behavior and support students who exhibit this undesired behavior has really worked well for us to address and get this reduction that we see here.
Mr. Rosser?
Yes.
Because a question that comes up constantly is, basically, are you cooking the data?
Absolutely not.
Because I want to know, what is the information about the number of incidences that have occurred, that have been logged into our central computer system? Has that gone down or has that increased?
Well, that has increased. So our response to the types of behaviors that we've seen is what has changed. So our response to discipline, our response to undesired behavior is what has changed. And our reduction is legitimate. There's no cooking of the books, there's no unethical behavior embraced by myself, by Dr. Jenkins, or by our staff. So these are legit numbers. Legit numbers to report, wholeheartedly. Yep. Yes.
So I'm a little hoarse as well. I was ill last week, so forgive me. But I want to say, we've used a lot of alternatives to suspensions. So we've had a lot of things in place. So for every student that's suspended, they have to come before me. And I have a conference with every single student. I need to know why you behave the way that you did, what could you have done differently, and how will you do better next time? Every single student. And that has helped tremendously. So now they don't want to disappoint me, so they're working harder not to do things. They're helping to break up the fights. We don't want to disappoint Dr. Jenkins or Mr. Rosser. And so alternatives have been very, very helpful in us helping the students understand they can change their behavior themselves. We are doing a lot of reward, we do a lot of praise, a lot of recognition, because they need that as well. So no, we are not cooking the books. Come on in, meet with us, walk with us throughout the building, and you will see that it's about building those relationships.
One thing that I would like to say in closing is, on a positive note, last week, we took 60 students to see Alvin Ailey Ballet. Two weeks before that, we took 120 to the Detroit Symphony Orchestra. A week before that, we took 35 to see a play in the city of Detroit. We're very big on introducing our students to these culturally enriching experiences, and it really has helped to transcend the mindset as well. Thank you.
The next team up here, Dr., I'm glad that you asked that question, because one thing we found last year, now you saw how the suspensions were, you know, almost double in some cases. Last year, what we also found out is that all of the incidents that were occurring in the school was not being logged. So things that were being logged were the suspensions, and it was a lot. So one thing we put out this year is said, everything that happens in your building needs to go into the MyStar system. So we did see an increase in incidents, because we said, put it all in there. But the incidents, it like fights, like that, that didn't increase at all. But stuff like skipping, things that you would generally probably call home and just not log in, we said, log it all, because we need to know what's going on in our school so we can have a handle on what's going on in our school. Does that make sense? Thanks for bringing that up. Last team, Wayne Memorial, Mr. Webber.
So as I talk about Wayne Memorial High School, some of the messages you heard before was about like new administration. So I've been very fortunate, have three wonderful assistant principals here. And we've been, this is my sixth year at Wayne Memorial High School. When I started Wayne Memorial High School, Wayne Memorial, the state of Michigan was still doing percentile rankings for how schools were ranked. And Wayne Memorial was an 11th percentile school. The last time they ended doing that, we were at 53rd percentile. 2017 and 2018, the US News and World Report named Wayne Memorial High School one of the best high schools in America. Less than 30% of high schools in America can receive that designation. And so that's culture and relationships, what Dr. Townsend was talking about. This is something that's been essential to our building this whole time, and we continue down that path with even more efforts now. And I'll kind of speak to some of those. And so, an interesting piece of data, in January of 2010, we had 190 suspensions at Wayne Memorial, just for the one month. This past year, we had 30. Just like Dr. Townsend talked about, like when we talk about statistics, it's important to like clarify, like, so what we have up there is the same exact date, which would be February of this year and like February of the last year. So we didn't like change the date or something like that, because we would have different dates of school. And so at Wayne Memorial, this year, we see a 26% reduction in suspensions. And like Dr. Townsend said, fights, you can't hide a fight, there's not a different, a fight's a fight. We have a 21% reduction in our fights. And so we have our whole staff focused and our whole administrative team, our Culture and Climate Coaches focused on being positive, being present, and being proactive. It's about finding the problems before they start, it's about being places, talking to kids. You know, I don't yell at kids. You know, get to class, we're talking about stuff, we're interacting with them in the hallways, and then, hey, reminder, let's get to class on time. It's those kind of things. It's building those relationships, it's the high fives, it's the positive feel that we want to have in our classroom and our building at all times. So this year, we have, you know, you've heard a lot about the alternatives to suspension, you know, and so we're still holding kids accountable. It's not like we just said, okay, this behavior is fine, just whatever, we'll just turn a blind eye to it. We talk about when there were sort of practices, the discipline window, and that would be one of them being permissive, just allowing the behavior to occur. And that's not what's occurring when we reduce those things, we're responding in different ways. And kind of a nice little way to think about it, if a student can't read, what do we do? We teach them. If a student can't ride a bike, what do we do? We teach them. If they can't drive, what do we do? We teach them. If they can't behave, what do we do? We discipline. And so when students are having issues, that's a call for help. And how do we support that student and how we support them and what we do? It doesn't mean we have to accept that behavior, but like you heard Franklin talk about the IRP questions. What happened? What were you thinking? What are you going to do differently next time? And so we've had those same things at Wayne Memorial High School. We've embraced those alternatives. Our staff over the summer met, and we talked about the Culture and Climate Coaches. With a building the size of Wayne Memorial High School, we're talking 1,600 students, we're talking about 80-plus staff members, how to get everyone on the same page. So we put everyone in the same, and collaborated about how we would do Culture and Climate, how we would use our Culture and Climate Coaches. And we created what's called an Alternative Learning Center, which is a way that our teachers can signify that they have a student they need help with, but also that students can activate and they can get support. And those staff members are out, those are our Culture and Climate Coaches, they're present, they're positive, they're interacting, kids are going to them, seeking them out to solve their conflicts, to solve their problems, to share a problem they have. If a student's just having a hard time in a class that day, they can go there, talk through it, work through it, giving them a place to go. They also are doing some interaction with some of our students. When we see things like tardies and things like that, they interact with those students, again, talk to them, redirect the behavior. And that's freed up some of our other staff to do more meaningful things. So if we do get to a suspension point, if anything gets to a three-day suspension point, when that student comes back into the high school, they're going to meet with their counselor. And so, right, we've dealt with that incident, that behavior, but now let's talk about what's happened since then, and how do we make sure this doesn't happen again? It's not just, we did this and then moving on. We want to make sure we're there to support them, and they re-enter into the building, and they're successful as they continue. And so, Dr. Townsend talked about Positive Actions, we're one of the schools doing Positive Actions. Our health curriculum is the Michigan Model Health Curriculum, which has a lot of the goal-setting, problem-solving, conflict-resolution skills are embedded inside that. Our staff had Restorative Practices training in the early part of the year, and will continue down that path. We've seen the benefits of this, and this is really what we believe at Wayne Memorial High School, is one of the pieces that's going to continue to elevate it to even higher level, where being a US News Best School in America just becomes an expectation and a normalcy thing, not the last two years. We'll be talking about, we've been doing it for years. And we want to have, we want to be in that top 25 band, we want to be in that elite band. And so those are the things that we're doing on. It's been really great for our school, and I continue to expect these things to grow. Thank you, Dr. Townsend.
I do want to last, before any questions, listen, changing the climate and culture of any organization, especially this size, you have to think, we have over 10,000 kids. And you see those major reductions. That's a three-to-five-year process. We're on the right track, the work is difficult, it's hard, it's not for the faint heart, and our educators should be celebrated on a daily basis, giving their all to ensure our young people are exceeding at a high level. Thank you so much.
So at this point, we're going to have a really quick thought exchange. We did take out the video, but we want to make sure that you all know that we want your voice in everything that we do. We are Wayne Westland Community Schools. So what I'd ask you to do is to pull out your phone, we all have them, because we all have them.
Come on.
You pull out your phone, and you go into your browser or whatever it is, where you go to the internet, and you put in thoughtexchange.com/join. And then you're going to put in that code, and it's going to ask you a question, and it's literally just going to ask you for your thoughts. What do you think? And it is, it's a platform that allows us as a community to engage in a conversation where, quite frankly, words aren't said out loud. We put it on paper. So take a moment, join the thought exchange, we're going to give you about two or three minutes just to join that, and you'll start to see how it works. Once it loads, it'll ask you for a code, and you put in the code that's there. That'll take you into the room, and I believe your question on there should be, after Dr. Townsend's presentation on Climate, Culture, Social, Emotional Learning, what thoughts or questions do you still have? What thoughts or questions do you still have? Once you put your own thought in there, then you'll be able to rate the thoughts of everyone else who put in a thought. So now, not only are you putting your thoughts out, you're also commenting on everyone else's thought. This is a strategy we use not only here with groups this large, we can also use in the classroom, as parents and faculty meetings, but sometimes everybody doesn't want to talk out loud. But everybody can use their thumbs. We know that. Everybody get it in there? Get their code in there? All right. And so what will happen is, once you start putting it into your information, you're going to start to see the analytics for your comments come in. So hold on, we've got to wait a moment.
Anybody need some support?
We have an entire team of people that are used to doing this. Getting in there? Go ahead and switch it over, Jenny, let's see. So now you'll start to see the analytics start to come up of your thoughts. There we go. What this will do over time, and we're not going to do that tonight just for the sake of time, what it'll do is it'll start to theme the thoughts, and then after about a few minutes, well, if you guys were, once you learn how to use it, then we could have Dr. Townsend answer the two or three top questions that are in the room, and no one will have said a word, everyone will have participated, everyone's thought, everyone participates. So it takes out the whole loudest voice in the room, or the people that dominate conversations. Now everyone is part of that conversation, and I can't read that from here, but I'm sure you'll see that there's something up there that he could have answered, because I can't see that to save my life.
Yes, all schools are participating, all schools have a Climate and Culture Coach. But I'll still answer that way too, bud.
And so over time, what we want to do as a community is that when we have these kind of topics of conversation that come up, what we are asking as a school district is that we keep those kind of things off of Facebook, and instead, you can propose to do a thought exchange and have us as a community begin to have an actual conversation that is solution-centered, solution-oriented, to move us forward as opposed to what ends up on other social media platforms, which is not productive in any way, shape, or form. So in order to take care of that, we now have the thought exchange, and we can do thoughts exchanges on any topic whatsoever, and folks are getting more and more tuned, you know the kids pick this up real quick. But within our Climate and Culture, we want to ensure that every voice is heard in Wayne Westland. There are no silent voices. Make sense? All right. With that, thank you so much, Dr. Townsend.
Dr. Townsend, thank you, and to all your dedicated people who came up and spoke tonight. We certainly appreciate it, and what we're... And what we're, one of the questions I had is, "How long has this approach to behavioral issues existed within the public school system?"
Are you talking about generally or Wayne Westland?
Generally. When did this scientific technology begin to be assembled and used?
So social-emotional learning, to my knowledge, goes back to the mid-early 2000s with restorative practices. There was a Dear Colleague Letter from the Office of Juvenile Justice and the Office of Civil Rights, wrote a letter to the White House Administration saying, "Listen, we must consider restorative practices with our young people because in the juvenile system, there was a large disproportionality of young people that went straight from the school to the prison." So there's a school-to-prison pipeline. So addressing that in the juvenile justice system, that kinda trickled into the school. And there's been amazing results across the country. When I was in Massachusetts as a high school principal, we were heavy on restorative practices in SEL. And it was a game changer for us, even in the District of Columbia. That's why they were one of the fastest improving urban school districts in the country because of the implementation of some of these best practices with regards to discipline. Even on the west coast of California, a lot of the, Michigan is just, that's why the state has a charge to be top 10 in the next 10 because we've traditionally been at the bottom because they've not been on the best practices in some people's opinion. And restorative practices just became law in 2017. But as I mentioned before, that's been going on since the early 2000s. So Michigan is now, Wayne Westland, we're doing our part. We're ahead of the game. We expect to be a top 10 district in the state in the next 10 years. And we're on that track, so we're all right.
Very exciting, sir, and we appreciate all your efforts. The next portion of our agenda, 254.19, is Citizens Comments. We welcome citizens' comments on agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the board? I had the opportunity to fill out a slip. I don't know, do we have any of those? Does anyone wish to address the board? Okay, hold on. Mr. Neal, please come up to the lectern, please.
Just a little lead into this session. The Board of Education works with the citizens of the district. Obviously, therefore, your input is welcome. At every board meeting, time will be set aside for citizens' comments. The board offers two separate sessions for citizens' comments. The first session is reserved for comments related to items on tonight's agenda. The second session, near the end of the meeting, is reserved for citizens' general comments or comments on items not found on the agenda. A citizen comment card usually is available. I don't know, do we have those up? Okay, out in the front. And if you were to want to speak on a specific item, that would be a good thing to fill out the card and turn it in to our Board Secretary tomorrow. Citizens that wish to speak should fill out a card. Anyone may address the board. The board policy limits speaking time to three minutes. Each session for public comment will generally be limited to no more than 30 minutes. The usual procedure for the board is to listen to citizens' comments, take note of the issues, and instruct the administration as necessary. Generally, the board will not respond directly to your comments. The President of the Board will moderate the public comment period. And when you are recognized to speak, please state your name and residency for the record.
Thank you, and please.
Hi, greetings, everybody. To the board, the superintendent, staff, administrators. My name is Stephanie Gaines, and I have three children in this district. We were a part of the whole merger between Easton Public Schools and Wayne Westland. And I had a lot of fear and trepidation about my students coming to Wayne Westland. But I now appreciate, under the leadership of Dr. Holt, all of the community engagement that has taken place. I appreciate that you've been able to come to the community, galvanize not only churches, not only organizations, not only the schools, not only the people. It has been amazing, and I've seen a great change. Not only am I a parent, but I'm an administrator as well. And so I know that that's a hard task. My students, I have a student at Wayne Memorial. She is graduating class of 2019. She is number 32 on the girls' basketball team. I mean, she has been doing a great job. But one of the things that I like, when we talk about community engagement, those girls don't just go by themselves. They have the community with them, they have the bus, the student bus. But not only that, but Dr. Holt, they talk about you being there.